Okay. Okay, so I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Let me put this off to the side. There we go. And let's see. Yeah, so I think Adam is supposed to join us via Zoom as well, and we'll see. If it happens, whenever he joins, he joins. Okay, Edie, are you here because you want to use privilege of the floor? Let's see, I probably have to tell you, can you talk?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. No, I was just curious what this was all about. I probably should have downloaded the information on mobile homes, but I didn't.
Okay, well, I'll give you the quick. Is there anything else I want to say? Sorry.
Not at this point.
Okay. The thumbnail sketch, and if you stick around for that part of the meeting, you'll learn more, is that the towns have a mobile home park law, which would now be called the manufactured home park law, on the books since the 1980s. And during the zoning work, it was discovered, you know, that was pretty old, and that was at a time before there was site plan, before there was subdivision review, before there was zoning, and so it's definitely out of date and out of sync actually with where the town is now. So it was flagged as something that needed to be updated. So that's the gist of what's happening. The details are actually, we're gonna maybe start getting into today.
Okay.
And since I dispatched the rest of my committee to work on it, I can't give you any insight yet. But that's what the meat of the meeting is gonna be about, is what do we do with this crickety old law?
Okay. Well, I was just curious as to, you know, where everything was going.
Yeah.
I don't know if somebody is thinking about starting another mobile home park in the neighborhood or in the town, if that had anything to do with it.
So, to the best of my knowledge, now that I understand, you know, no. Again, it was simply a law flagged by the zoning commission as needing to be updated because, you know, again, it didn't really fit in well with all the development in terms of land use regulations since that time. And as far as I know, it was not prompted because, oh my God, there's gonna be one or anything like that. There's nothing like that. And as I, you know, sort of assume you know, the zoning law treats mobile homes as a home, you know, and indeed, there's guidance from New York State that that's the way it ought to be. So I think if anything, we're gonna probably be making sure everything is even-handed between the way that a manufactured home and a stick-built home are treated under Caroline laws. Obviously, there are mobile home manufactured home parks, which are different kind of entity, and that's what we'll mostly be talking about. But anyway, I'm, as I say, talking through my hack. I don't really know what the subcommittee has come up with, so we'll get there.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just curious about it, as my father owns the park there on Lounsbury Road, and I may be the owner of it at some point.
Well, you know, as the reasons go, anything that happens, you know, existing uses, even if they were considered non-conforming, would be allowed to continue. And I do not know if there's any particular regulation or change that could say, oh, you know, they need to meet this standard now. You know, typically, then if you wanted to modify your mobile, your manufactured home park, you may have to come up to the new standards. But I think, again, don't take this as the last word. Typically, if it's an existing use, it'll be allowed to continue as is. Existing uses can be granted out, but they can be given an amortization period over which they have to be phased out, but Town of Carolina has not, as far, kind of played that frame thing so far.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on.
Well, those were, you know, and I just, you know, curious about, you know, mobile homes and, you know, that town was heading towards and that sort of thing.
Yeah, well, again, that's, we'll be talking about what to do about our mobile home park law later in the meeting, and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, so then, the first thing is then the minutes from the January 21st meeting. Are there any changes, additions, anything else folks think need to happen?
Yep, just minor. It's a mobile with an E on the end.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Thank you.
Yep. I did wanna just make a comment that the main reason I had asked about the right to farm law is because the egg plan is, has a more expansive definition of farming than the zoning law or the state.
All right, all right.
I wasn't sure I mentioned that.
Okay, I'm gonna make a note that I could add, yes, because you are right, you made that point, and I forgot it when I wrote the minutes. And so.
It doesn't have to be in the minutes, and I will, I'm still on the egg committee, so, you know, I'll bring it up there as well.
Okay. Since we're on this, I did, I touched base with the chair, and, but she says, yeah, she was not particularly aware of anything with the right to farm law itself. But I hear you, and it's an important point, that if we have a right to farm law, but the egg plan, again, wants to be more inclusive about types of farming, we should think about whether they also be covered by the right to farm law. I do know, I mean, the question is, I don't think the signs are up. I think the town is way behind on getting some signage up, and so I'm gonna put a bug in the ear of the highway people.
Can you mute Edie?
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry, let me, Edie, you should, I don't know if I can mute you, if you can mute yourself, because then just make sure we don't get any background noise or problems. Let's see if I can, there we go, thank you so much. Okay, so with the typo, and I will probably add a quick note about why the egg, the farm law came up, I will take these as accepted. Okay, Michelle, report from the town board, and specifically, I know that, you know, I had posed the question about our work in general, but definitely about the work on the critical environmental areas that I assume you guys talked about at your last meeting. So what can you tell us about what's going on and we should know about?
No, I think people were supportive about you working on critically, critical environmental areas. The other notes, I have, I had a list, you know, of proposed, of your proposed projects, and the board's supportive of continuing work on the mobile home law. This, I think, on your list is the solar law, make agro voltaics friendly, and see if the review board would recommend any changes based on their experience. And the note I have there is that they're not ready yet to comment.
They being the review board?
Yes.
Okay, that may not be different, we'll get to that in a minute.
The flood damage prevention law, I think Mark has sent you the boiler plate?
Yes, and I will be discussing that next, yes.
Okay. There was the stormwater law, I kind of wonder if maybe that part of that whole, nobody seems to know anything about that, and I wonder if, that might have been my fault that I said that Rebecca and Roxy were wanted it updated, but anyway, I didn't get any feedback that anybody thinks it's a priority to update it. And then the right to farm law, again, it's like the, we would have to hear from the agriculture committee. I think the sense was that, you know, you listed quite a few projects, and they feel like, you know, you should start with the mobile home law and then see, see where you can get from there.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, sounds good, I think it falls in line. So before I talk about the flood damage protection law and what's going on there, I'm inserting an agenda item, which is some of these workshops I have now sent you guys information about. So, the background for one of them, I just, this afternoon, sent you some stuff about some wetlands workshops. And the reason that those are coming out now is that the DEC is changing some basics about wetland regulation. And one of the big changes is that wetlands delineation are no longer sort of.
Excuse me, there was just an email from Adam, is there a link to the Zoom meeting?
Oh, he should go to the town webpage, and it's there, I think, on the, Will, where do you find the link? Right on homepage, or?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I think it was on the homepage, yep.
Yeah, I think it's up on the right side there, thank you.
Okay, again.
So, up to now, the DEC has, there's maps of wetlands, of the protected area, and those are often, have often been created by field workers who've gone out and looked in the field, and then they go back to DC and they draw a map. And the maps, I think, because the maps aren't always accurate, and there've been some issues with that, and because technology has advanced, the DEC is completely changing that, and maps are now basically advisory, and instead, they are using remote sensing technology to determine boundaries of a wetland, plus I assume some additional field work. And the basic idea, as I understand it, is that if you have a project that looks like it might need this, you email the parcel off to DEC, and they email you back and say, yes, our guys from afar tell you that it's a problem, or no, you're not in the zone. So that's a very thumbnail sketch, but it's a sort of a very different way of determining. It's not like everyone's gonna go out in the field and look at it right away, they're doing remote sensing stuff. Similarly, over the next couple of years, there's gonna be a change that, right now, DEC regulates wetlands 2.4 acres and larger, but over the next two or three years, that's gonna be shrunk to 7.4 acres. There's a difference there. And then there's a whole class of things, some of which may exist now, of smaller wetlands that are regulated anyway. And so there's been some workshops, DEC has helped sort of explain all these changes. That being said, I sent you a thing that had both links to some, a webinar they did, plus links to two upcoming webinars. Of the upcoming ones, I think the first one might be potentially of interest to someone on the planning board. The latter one, I think, is much more nuts and bolts regulation, maybe your review board sort of level. The stuff online, I think, might be useful. I took a look at one of the two PowerPoints, and I think that maybe listening to the presentation with that PowerPoint would get us up to speed on what DEC is really doing. So that's, you know.
So you're not recommending either of the two upcoming?
I would say of the two upcoming ones, the first one perhaps, but that's, you know, that's up to you guys, if it's of interest, it's fine, and our seminar would count as an hour of training, of the four hours of training.
Okay.
So take a look yourself.
Will the recorded things count as training?
You know, that's a question I cannot answer. The first one.
Who can answer that?
Yes, we can basically ask Mark.
Okay.
Okay, and.
Can you do that?
Yes, I can. I know, I just didn't have a chance to, I talked to him about something earlier, so I will. And I think it's fine, I think it'd be a good idea for one of us, at least one of us, to do it, and I'm happy having it count as training hours. And then this is a certain level of trust. I mean, from the Department of State end, they often want to have very official things, and tenants take in and out, I think we can handle it. And, you know, if you tell us something of what's in there, then it's gonna, we'll work it out. So that's one set of stuff. And definitely of the, of the two upcoming things, the first one is one hour of credit through the New York Planning Federation, which I believe Caroline is a member of, so it counts. They were very clear that you have to be a member of the Federation for it to count. The other thing coming up, that I also sent you a flyer about, is at the end of March, there is a workshop in Groton on agri voltaics. And I did clear with Mark that that would count as training hours. It fulfills all the hours because it's like a six-day, six-hour event. I'm, you know, working hard just making sure that I can go, I'm not positive yet, but I think I'll be going. And anyone else on the planning board is welcome to go to that training.
I have a comment about training on agri voltaics.
Yeah.
At the Association of Towns, they did have a session on agri voltaics. I didn't go to it, Mark or Tim may have, but in any case, it's likely to be, to have some kind of PDF available electronically in the coming week.
Okay, great, thank you, Will. I happened to talk to Mark just as he was stepping out of that workshop this afternoon, and he said it was good, so we'll see.
Yeah, it might be useful if we had a look at the presentation.
Yes, so, you know, I'm sure it'll be made available. At the Groton event, so Adam, we're talking about the flyer, one of the flyers I sent out, which was for this agri voltaic summit in Groton. To the presenters. Pardon?
I'm listening.
Okay, so two of the presenters at that, one is Caleb Scott, who's a Carolina resident, who's active in this field, and is the one that Erica Frey told us that she would recommend we talk to. And another person speaking is Guillermo Metz, who is a cooperative extension person, who Don Barber told me we should certainly talk to. So I've made contact with both of them, and they're both sort of on tap to come talk to us at some point, but I thought we should, you know, do something like attend this workshop first. So that's, that's there. So Adam, no one's required to go to the Groton thing, I am intending to go. Any other planning board member is welcome, and I'll catch you up on some of the wetland stuff I sent out. I'll not go over that again. So anyways, all these are all trainings that come up. I did contact on the point that Michelle made about the solar, updating solar law. I did make contact with the Chair of the Review Board, and in January, there was a hearing, that public hearing, they did approve the project that's going in on Old 76th Road, so it got a special use permit. He told me with conditions, I'm not aware of what those conditions are. But at any rate, they're, you know, that, they are now done with that, as of the end of January. So probably not at the time the town board had their meeting, but I wasn't thinking we'd talk to them until April or May anyway, because we got enough going on, so. And I wanted to be after the Groton thing. And turns out now, some slides from the Association of Towns. So that is upcoming trainings and workshops. Okay, are we done? Any else on that? Okay, so flood damage protection laws. So this is one of the items that I brought up, that they've been, Nan particularly pointed out that a lot of these law, you know, the basic law aims to protect, makes it buildings and utilities are designed, that are going in floods-prone areas, are designed to withstand the typical flood for that area. And what they aren't necessarily focused on is making sure that if there is a flood, that water quality is retained. So that's where I started. In the meantime, the updated FEMA maps for Caroline were finalized. And it turns out what that does is starts a clock ticking, because for Caroline to continue to qualify for, you know, various flood insurance programs, et cetera, we have to now pass a revised flood zone law by a certain date, which happens to be, I think, May or June. I heard it was done somewhere. We have to have our final law passed by May 19th to give DEC time to finally sign off on it. Turns out, as I now know a lot more than I used to know, basically, DEC gives each town a law, a template law, says, fill in your name, sign at the bottom, and send it back to us. And so the language is all from the DEC, and so we've now done that. Mark did that, and so the first draft of that went to DEC, because it had to be there by March 26th. So Mark and I talked about it, and I've now confirmed with Nan, that basically, DEC would just assume we didn't touch that law. You know, this is their words, their stuff, you know, I said we could add a section in it, and so we're gonna leave that law as is. So anything we do would be something in addition, a separate law. And there, so I have made kind of now with Nan Stolzenberg, who consults for the town on various land use things. Her preference is that it be in the zoning law rather than a separate law. That is always her preference. She, we did put the site plan law in the zoning law, but we have a lot of other laws, like the solar law and the subdivision law, that she really would rather we had put in the zoning law. But Caroline, for various reasons, has chosen not to do it that way. That's a long way of saying, I don't know how we're gonna work extra protections on water quality. Michelle, this is basically a decision for the town board, but it doesn't really have to be made right away. We can start working on what would the protections be, you know, come up with language, and then language either gets encapsulated in a law, which then has to have various preambles and stuff, or it gets inserted the next time the zoning law is revised. So I don't think we need an answer right away, and I will approach it with Mark too, but just to put you on notice that at some point, you know, we'll want direction guidance from the town board as to if we're gonna craft extra protections to protect water quality in the event of flooding. And Nan has given me some examples of things one might use, and kind of a model law that I would say is sort of an outline of a law that we could, you know, use as to base some recommendations on, as well as pointing me towards some other resources. And I would think that we might start working on that, you know, as we wind up, wind down to the mobile home, mobile park law. So it's not an imminent thing, go ahead, Michelle.
But I guess I got confused, because you said the DEC would prefer that we, that you did not change their boiler plate, correct?
So we're not gonna change their boiler plate, we're gonna do one of two things. We're gonna write a completely separate law.
Okay.
Of, I don't know, you know, water quality control against flooding, or I don't, you know, some, something to that effect. Or, there is a section of the zoning law that refers to the existing flood damage prevention law, and they would have a second line that says, either it would now refer to that other law saying, and, you know, anything in a flood zone must conform with the water quality law, or right there in the zoning law, you would have a set of standards, if anything being built in a flood zone has to, you know, follow these standards.
Okay.
Guaranteed, so the, so the, either there'll be some new text in the zoning law that specifies how to protect water quality, or there'll be a reference to an external law that guarantees water quality. So it's A or B.
All right.
So will the town, at what point will the town post this law? The DUC version?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, I think that they have to pass it by May 19th, and so I think, you know, the minimum is three weeks ahead of that. I will tell you, I mean, again, I've looked, so, okay, so if you want to know, it is almost word for word identical to what was passed several years ago, which makes sense, because probably DEC handed that one too. There are a few changes. Most of, a couple of which definitely went over my head as to why they changed that. What I will say, relevant to the current discussion, is that there is some water quality protection assurances in the law. In particular, they have what they call critical facilities are not to be located in a flood zone. Now, critical facilities, some of them mean things like, important things, like, you know, police stations, hospital, you know, stuff that you want to be able to always get to. But there's a whole nother category of critical facilities, which is anything basically storing hazardous waste or using toxic chemicals or whatever, and those clearly get directly at preservation of water quality in the event of flooding. So some of the worst stuff is already not allowed via the DEC's boiler plate law. All of that language is the same as what was there before, but the old law, I think, didn't allow, something about automobiles, like automobile repair shops. The new law seems to allow those. That's the one other change I sort of noticed, but. Anyway, if you want to see it, I'm sure the town will publish it, but if you look at the existing law, it's almost word for word the same. All right, so that's, go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you.
All right, so that's all I have, and again, we definitely have some, some stuff to start chewing on from Nan, as soon as we're ready to chew. Which brings us up to the currently called mobile home law, and again, modern parlance is manufactured home. And this law specifically applies to parks, so a group development. And I'm gonna now hand it over to the three of you who are working on that, though I did manage to do a little work myself, so I handle it possibly later on. So how do you guys?
So first of all, I just want to point out, the zoning law already has definitions in it.
Correct.
Okay. You know, for mobile home, manufactured home, modular home, mobile home park, three or more mobile homes.
Right, yeah, I think it's one of the things is, I mean, to be honest, my main question is, I'm not sure a lot of this law is gonna survive, once we consider the fact that we have site plan and subdivision review, but, and one of these is the definitions, because again, the definitions are already in the zoning law. So that's, I agree. So, all right.
Yeah, so I, I mean, we never, Bill, I think you're giving us more credit calling this the subcommittee. But, you know, so basically, I think we all just read the existing law, and then we kind of split up looking at some of the other local towns around us, and what their laws were, or what they might offer. So I'll just.
And should we maybe then go around the circle, you guys can each talk about the laws that you looked at?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can, I can kick this off just by kind of giving some overall thoughts about what it is that we should look at in the existing law in terms of updating it, but then talk a little bit about the two, the two towns that I was assigned. So, you know, just in general, I think, you know, to Will's point and your point, that, you know, manufactured home parks are defined in the zoning law. They're in the use table as, you know, multifamily developments, and all multifamily developments require site plan review in all zones. So, you know, basically, that's taken care of in the sense of referencing that.
And I think, tied it up, that they also take a special use permit as well.
I don't remember that, I remember the site plan review, might be, might be special use as well. I don't, I don't remember that.
Okay.
Let's see, what else? Multifamily developments with more than three structures, so that would be a manufactured home park. According to the zoning law, are supposed to be designed with the conservation, open space layout pursuant to conservation subdivisions. So, you know, that's something, again, to keep in mind, and that we'd have to, you know, refer to in this updated law. So I was assigned, oh, and let me just see if there's some other, so in general, and we've talked about this before, that when we do the update, the feeling was that, that to the extent possible and appropriate for a manufactured home park issue, we would, we would rely on the design standards and development standards that are in the zoning law, recognizing that there might be some specific things that are unique to manufactured homes, like spurting around the bottom of it, or, you know, something like that. So we would stay away from any development or design standards that are already covered in zoning law and just refer to those. Let's see. So when I looked at, I was assigned two things, Danby and Dryden. The Dryden one I'll start with first, in the sense that, as far as I could tell, their latest one was from 1987.
Okay, good, I was gonna ask if you knew the year, so each of you, if you know the year, I can start with that.
Yeah, so Dryden, that was last updated, as far as I could tell, in 1987. You know, lots of updated language about mobile homes and stuff. The one thing that caught my eye in the Dryden law was that they, they have a one-year license with automatic annual renewal based on meeting, you know, a set of criteria. And that's one thing that's in our current law, is the one-year relicensing required. And we had talked about whether one year is appropriate or not, so just as a, you know, point of reference, that's what Dryden has. They also have transferable licenses, so if you notify in writing who you want to transfer to, it can be transferred, and that there's a. And that there's a licensing fee of $25 for every 10 homes. So just to, for a point of reference. Danby was a bit, a bit more substantive. Their mobile home park regulations are included within their 2022 zoning law. And they actually refer to it as a mobile home park zone. So they have language in it that might be useful for us to look at. They have a section on location and criteria. They have a section on minimal, minimum area required for a mobile home park zone. They require a minimum tract of 10 acres for the development of a mobile home park zone. Interestingly, they have a required lot area, which is that each mobile manufactured home lot needs to have a minimum gross area of 5,000 square feet, whereas our current law requires 15,000 square feet.
Yeah, I noticed there was lot, I mean, yeah, we'll get to that.
Yeah, so, so, you know, again, that's an interesting point to think about. And then in terms of, you know, like, design and development standards, they have something specific for skirting, for parking requirement, you know, parking, for example, is one space for each manufactured home plus one additional space for each three homes. They include some buffering requirements, some things about open space and recreation areas, which for us might be taken care of because it's gotta be a conservation subdivision. They include some ideas about storage space. And then, and then basically refer to their usual site plan approval. So, you know, a little bit of specificity related to manufactured homes. So I, so I think that one would be good to look at, you know, in detail when we get into looking at the detailed language of our law and what should be revised.
Okay.
So that's what I learned from Dryden and Danby.
Alright, so before we move on to one of the other two of you, so, I mean, a lot of the language does sound to me very similar to what's in our existing law as well, because there's lot sizes, there's the, the need to have a, uh, like a community center space, all, all that. So they, they probably were coming from similar places.
Right.
One question I, so in terms of the conservation subdivision design, is that true for any mobile home park? Because we went through a big debate and basically let developments, even multifamily developments that are in the hazard zones choose whether or not they follow that design. And only in the ag rural zone. So were mobile home parks treated differently?
In, in what?
In our zoning.
No, no, no. I, I was just referring to multifamily developments with more than three structures.
Right.
And, and so, so that, yeah, I, I think that might pertain to certain zones. I didn't.
Okay, okay, good, yeah. Cause I, okay, so I think that only, I think, that only applies in the ag rural.
I, I, I think that's right. I mean, it's page 80, section 6.5.13, if you wanna go back.
No, I'll get there eventually, but.
Could I ask you a question about Danby?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, prior to the census, I did address verification and got assigned to a part of Danby out on, I guess it's 96B, where there's, I don't know what to call it, a mobile home park, but it has modular, I'm pretty sure modular homes and mobile homes in it. So I'm thinking about that and listening to the description of a mobile home park and wondering, did the park or whatever you wanna call that area exist prior to their law or? What was that all about?
I have no idea what existed when. I can't, I can't answer.
It's like 30, uh, homes.
Yeah, it, it almost certainly existed prior to the most recent zoning update, but whether this language was in the previous zoning is what I don't think any of us know, so. Cause I, I don't know if any of our mobile home parks in Caroline were created after the 1980, whatever it was, six or seven law that we have. I, you know, I don't know the answer. They, they may have, in which case they're just conforming their, you know, non-conforming uses according to that law.
How many does town of Caroline have?
Uh, well, and Edie may have to help here, but I know of two for sure, and there may be three. There's one on Lounsbury, as Edie mentioned, and then there's one, I think, as you head out on Route 79, towards the eastern part of town. Those are the only two I know about.
Okay, that's the only two I knew about as well.
Alright, uh, Will or Adam, you wanna talk about the laws you guys looked at? What's your next?
Sure, I'll, I'll talk about it. So the one in Groton, I believe, is maybe the newest of this, uh, group. It's from 2011. I don't believe it's an actual, it may not be a stand by itself law because it's, it's in, it's in the land use and development code in 2011. And it's just a couple pages within that, uh, as far as I could see. And a lot of it talks about, it almost sounds very similar to what you'd have to do to get a subdivision approval. The only thing I really noticed is it said, manufactured home parks have a special permit that has to be approved by the town board. Which, is that the same as what ours is now? Special permit, I do believe, right?
Existing law just says, yeah, there is a permit that must be approved by the town board in, in the existing mobile home law, right?
And then this one says, once it's approved, they have to buy, they have to abide by, once they get a certificate of occupancy, they have to basically do all the rest of the buildings in the park have to have, have to follow building code and get building permits for each individual one.
Okay.
Other than that, it's, I mean, it sounds like it's very, very similar to subdivision. And existing one that we have.
Okay.
And then the other one is from, uh, Enfield was from 1993. And it seemed also very, very similar to our existing. So it wasn't a whole lot of information in it.
And so, so, for example, Enfield, did Enfield, um, in that law specify how the buildings would be, like what the pad was supposed to be like, how they're to be anchored, uh, where they had skirting or not? Did they have those kind of details?
The, the details, I think, on both of them seem to mainly be about a, a stand, a, there was, it, as far as I could tell, there was like three different ways, or maybe just two different ways. One was over a, you know, full basement. And then it said a mobile home stand. I didn't quite understand what a mobile home stand was, and maybe a concrete pad. Didn't really explain it very well. I'm trying to, oh, there it is. Shall mean that the part of the mobile home lot on which the mobile home is placed and which is constructed in accordance with the standards provided in this local law, so.
Okay. Um, Edie, are you waving your hand trying to say something? Okay, good. Uh, yeah, except I know I've seen reference like cement pillars as one other way to, to mount these. At any rate, I, well, I, I think that that sort of stuff is now, I mean, specified elsewhere typically, but we may need to have it in this law, because it may not, but I think that there's a set of, well, let me not, let, let, let me let you guys carry on. So let's get through everything and then we'll.
The, the, the gist I got from at least the 2011 one is that it has, each mobile home has to uh, basically pass modern building code. And so I would imagine that would have to be for the foundation as well. But also that New York State one that you sent us, it kind of says that that mobile homes are federally accepted or federally built to, to a standard. And so that we kind of have to allow it. I'm not, I didn't understand that one completely.
Well, you know, what was interesting there was that there's a requirement to have people specifically trained for, I guess you would call it, the installation of, uh, the mobile home, actually set them up.
Right.
And that's a major difference from regular, regular residential homes. You wouldn't have that requirement there. So somewhere that requirement would have to appear. I don't know if it's in, uh, the codes. You would think so, but I, I don't, I haven't had a chance to look yet.
And one of the things I picked up on that document, I don't know if I remember to take that, uh, I probably did. Yeah, so, it says, local governments are responsible for the administration and enforcement of the uniform code. And, um, and basically that's where some of these requirements are. They're, they want to be in the uniform code. There's also, as I recently learned, something called the International Residential Code that is often appealed to. And Will is really up on that stuff more than I am. But, um, so they say that the local municipality really should require a building permit because it's our job to make sure that the uniform code is followed. And you don't know that unless you know that someone's building something, so you can have your inspector there. So anything going in needs to have a, a, a building permit. And so our job is to make sure that indeed, as Will said, that the properly accredited people are doing the installation and that the proper sticker is attached to the trailer, that it is of the approved quality and all that. So yeah, that's, that's all in there. So that's where I found that. And I found a later notice, maybe it's in our old mobile, I think it's in the mobile home lot, that our fire code is where some of the local stuff may be that specifies that they have to put in with the, uh, building. I, I don't know. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily think you need a building permit to put in a mobile home. I'm not building anything. But, so I think we may need to dig into our, our fire code, because it, that may be where some specifications for how it's installed are, are currently reside. But at any rate, we have to make sure we require a building permit.
We still have to get a septic permit and electric, electric permit and all that, so.
Saving occupancy, all that stuff, I'm sure.
Now, did you guys see that New York State executive law? It was in that, the New York State one you sent us. It was uh, laws of 2015, so it seemed like a fairly new part. Places limits on local government regulations of manufactured homes.
Right.
Yeah, so essentially we have, we have to allow them as a, you know, as a residential dwelling, yeah, as a, as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think, again, my takeaway, you're not allowed to treat them any differently than you would essentially a stick-built home.
Yeah.
Other than some particular peculiarities like, you know, the fact that you may wanna have turning radius on the, on a mobile home park drive because you have to have a big, long thing get in there. Um, but in general, you're not allowed to, you know, I think, do prejudicial actions against a mobile home. And in our zoning law, a single-family home, or duplex for that matter, or even a triplex, are allowed without any, um, additional review. And so the same must be true of installing a mobile home on a single property. As Barb pointed out, it's different if you're doing a development. The developments fall under a different part of things. But yeah, yeah, I, I noticed that.
Yeah, and, and Bill, just to your earlier question, I'm looking at the zoning law now and, um, for, for the definition of multifamily developments, it says explicitly that this includes, um, manufactured home parks.
Yes.
And in the use table for multifamily developments, it only requires SBR.
Okay, so I may have an old version of the, uh, zoning law on my computer then, because I thought I downloaded the recent one. Okay, I, I believe you.
Zoning law.
Alright, I believe you. Okay, well, that's an issue. Perhaps, um, because the special use permit could take the place of this permit that is otherwise in here, or maybe not. Maybe we shouldn't require a permit, but any rate, uh, we will get there and I will, I will have to update my file at home. Thank you for that, Barb.
Is a special use permit different than the mobile home or mobile, or mobile home park permit that most of the laws talk about?
So I, so I think so. So again, at the time the law was written for Caroline, we had no such thing as a special use permit. So it was, if you wanted to make someone have a permit, you had to write it into a law because we had no other mechanism. Groton does have zoning, so I'm a little confused as to why they do it that way. It might be, there are good reasons that I'm not aware of. I was hoping we could use the SUP process to substitute for that. And it also wouldn't necessarily be an annual permit then, because they, when they approve it, they could say this lasts for X number of years and, or some, but anyway, Will had a comment.
Well, I, when, in reading other folks', um, laws, I started, especially the more recently written ones, I was assuming they're talking about an operating permit, which would be different than a building permit type permit.
Yeah, that, that was my assumption too, in looking at the, I guess it was the Dryden one. It's, it's basically, I mean, they call it a, a one-year license. You know, an annual license. It's not a, it's not a bill permit. And then the, um, the, uh, Danby one, um, you know, refers specifically, they've got a line in here that, let me find it again, that, um, building permits, a building permit shall be required pursuant to this law for each main mobile home and/or accessory structure to be cited or constructed.
Yeah, so I think we need to make sure a building permit is required, but this, this question of this operational permit, which is what allows the park or a license was into that annual renewal sort of idea, or at least every two or three years. I, I mean, I guess we can, I, it's, I think it's a question we need to, to face and think about. Is there rationale for that? It feels, I, would you require also if someone was building a set of apartment buildings? Um, and if not, what's the reason for, for being different about a mobile, you know, manufactured home park? So, um.
The Groton one, the Groton one doesn't say that it's, it's, it's renewable. It just says, manufactured home park special permit has been approved by the town board. That's, doesn't say it takes, you don't have to do it any more than once. So that's sort of like your, the special use permit, right?
Right.
Yeah, the, the Dryden one says approval of the license renewal, again, annually, shall be automatic upon demonstration that the design and maintenance of the park is in accordance with the requirements at the time of approval of the initial permit. So, so I think part of this is related to, you know, to ongoing maintenance. Now, I mean, your question would, you know, would an apartment complex get the same thing? Probably not, but, you know, by the nature of what's in a manufactured home park, there might be, you know, I'm not saying that there is, but there might be more reason to do that.
Yeah, that, that's what I'd have to know.
Yeah, more about.
Aren't most mobile home parks, the, the ownership of the, a lot of the trailers, the mobile homes are from the, the people that, you know, buy them. And then, and a lot of times, just the lot is owned by the person, the landlord, I guess you could say. So maybe that would be the reason, because someone might have a, you know, decrepit house next to a nicer one? I don't know.
Yeah, so, um, Newfield, I, I actually, they, they, uh, are, they only have a draft law at this point. And it looked like their final draft was at the end of 2023. But they started working on it in 2022. And, uh, Tompkins Weekly interviewed people about, uh, the rewriting of the law. And, um, town supervisor was quoted as saying, the mobile home parks created 30 and 40 years ago have changed hands and have often been sold to larger corporations that don't have a local connection. They are simply collecting rent and providing minimal services to sustain the, the properties. So, um, you know, we, when, especially when we were looking. When, especially when we were looking at uh, battery energy storage, we really looked into fire code and uniform. Code um, requirements. Um, and at this. Association of Towns meeting, I went to a couple of sessions about code enforcement. And honestly, I was surprised to find there's a whole body of code. Specifically about maintaining properties. It's in codes, the towns are by law obligated to um, enforce. It, it's a, it's a big issue. It's very, it gets very complicated. Um, but it, it is the kind of thing that allows. Um, a municipality to go into um, say a poorly maintained apartment building. And uh, cite code violations.
All right. And so I, so I, yes, I think the partial answer to this question that you've put your finger on is. Particularly if there's a remote owner, you know, um, this gives the town some leverage to make sure they're at least doing minimal maintenance. For the people who are living there. Um, so it's as, as much a protection for the residents as, as anything else as.
Exactly. Yeah. And there was a lot of concern about upkeep of um. Roadways uh, within the mobile home parks.
I think the other point is I think the Department of State document made clear is that. Mobile homes have come so a long way in the decades. And so I think when a lot of these laws were being written, they were being written against the backdrop of. Things were put in the sixties and seventies that fell apart quickly. And so there may have been also a stronger impetus to make sure that, you know. They were better. But now there's federal standards on the construction of the, of the mobile home. There are federal and state standards on how it's installed. Um, you know, the connections, so uh, you know, that all is better. So I understand maybe why there was more concern. But it also seems like there may be rationale, if these are extractive properties only, to, to have some. Local leverage on, on maintenance.
There's also uh, the, you know, in these sessions, they also made a point. Um, that as, as a municipality, it's a good. Um, strategy that they encourage, that if the town starts to feel that there are. Home mo- specifically mobile homes, but also any homes. That are uh, deteriorating um, because the owner cannot. Afford to do the needed repairs. They said there's all kinds of money out there available to uh, remedy the situation. But that money is not available to be funneled through a mun- municipality. And what they recommend is that the municipality direct. Either the owners or the occupants toward nonprofits that have that money. And to uh, get the repairs done that way. Um, and avoid all the code enforcement issues from going any farther.
Okay, so what this is bringing to my mind. So, so yes, and I think again, the role that somebody could play is to have all that information available. Here's these nonprofits to go to. Well, here's the program you could apply to. I think that's a great role for the municipality. But what this is bringing to my mind. In general, it's so, right, one option is because there are these codes that say properties have to be maintained. Is that you, you would apply that to an apartment building as well as a manufactured home park? And you just say, okay, we're gonna enforce codes. I, it does get hard. And this is why, I mean, I'm easily well aware of some of the stuff along Caroline Depot Road where there's been properties that need to be. You know, not just in that, in your, and after I point to you, there's a place right across the street from me with all kinds of junk in the yard. And the town's been saying they're after this for years and nothing's happened. So I think that in practice. It is difficult for the town to enforce these um, maintenance building codes. Um, that's what I've been told by the towns. It's, it's because it's a lot to go after and just, you know. So it may make sense to therefore, this is my big circle around, to go ahead and require some sort of operational permit. And I actually would apply it to other multi-family developments as well for the same reason. If some corporation came in and built a bunch of apartment buildings. The town might need some extra leverage to make sure they maintain them appropriately, but.
Do you think the difference between a mobile, mobile home park versus an apartment? Apartment complex or multiple apartments, houses on a piece of property similar to like, you know, Boiseville. Would, is that the construction of, of the apartments or Boiseville? Houses are better quality and more and able to last longer than a typical. Mobile home would is maybe that's why there's such a difference in. In treating them differently?
I'm sure that was the rationale and the thinking. And some of that, like I said, may be outdated thinking because mobile homes have come some distance from. Maybe what that experience had been. Uh, I think it's also possible to build a crappy stick-built building.
Oh, yeah.
But, but the investment is, you know, so I think there's a tendency because of the investment in actually. You know, bringing together for, yeah, a, a stick-built home to be a bit higher quality, but I think there's no guarantee of that. And I think they point out in the document, uh, a modular home where the walls essentially are built off-site and bring in, just stuck together. There's very little difference between that and a stick-built home. And now, again. Manufactured homes are also of. Pretty good quality. I did live in one for a while. It's not why I'm being so defensive about them. I, you know, the one I lived was pretty crappy. But anyway. I just, I, you know, as Barb knows, we know that they're an important housing solution in, in the town, so. I don't wanna be prejudiced against them.
I lived in one too.
What?
I lived in one.
Yeah.
They are an important housing solution.
Um, so you looked at Newfield. Will, did you look at another, um, anything else to draw from that and any other laws that you looked at?
Um, okay, so I didn't look at Newfield as closely as Lansing. Uh, but I did notice that they chose to just address mobile home parks. And they made a big distinction between the owner of the mobile home park. The owner of the um. Mobile home and the occupant of the mobile home and a renter. And uh, they, they feel, they, uh, it looks like in Newfield that. Depending on your status that way, you have different responsibilities.
Okay.
So I thought that was interesting. I'm not sure what to make of it really. Um. Lansing, uh. Uh, there, they updated in twenty twenty-four, so last year in uh, like. Um, like us, they, they defined a mobile home park as three or more mobile homes. Um, they um, specifically allow what in their town is their planning board. To waive requirements if uh. Special circumstances justify it. Um, and uh, that the planning board would um. Need to spell out the criteria for providing the waiver of any standard or requirement. Um, their site plans do have to be like. Uh, everybody else signed by a licensed engineer, surveyor, or architect. And they spelled out what goes into the site plan. You know, uh, design standards for minimum size, um. Maximum um, percent footprint. And then they really went into the minutia of things like individual lot parking requirements. Front yard and backyard size requirements and. Street requirements and signage requirements, um. And um, maintenance requirements.
Um, so, right, because Lansing is building on their zoning and. Um, you know, Caroline took a much lighter approach to zoning. So we don't have in general, you know, yards, side yard setbacks. Front yard setbacks, moving road frontage, a lot of stuff that appears in a lot of zoning codes and. Um, anyway, so I expect that's why it's in, in Lansing. Did Lansing actually use, say, mobile home rather than manufactured home?
Um, one second. Um, uh, mobile home. Yeah, mobile home, their mobile home definition uh, matches the New York State. Handout and um. Their, their law is specifically for mobile home parks.
Uh, the reason I ask is that I think similar to what we had with the adult entertainment use law. It may be that their law is actually older, but just got incorporated or codified as, as Guy said. More recently. So, because again, my guess is if you were updating something to two thousand twenty-four, you would update. The language from mobile home to manufactured home, but that's just one clue that may indicate that. I could be wrong.
Well, um, didn't they say that? Um, mobile home was still a term for pre.
Uh, pre-seventy-six buildings or something.
Yeah. They also uh, require recreational area. Um, they said that their planning board could require screening or fencing. Um, and they wanted, um. They want, if you wanted to put an awning on your mobile home, you needed a building permit, which uh. I find puzzling, but maybe other people wouldn't. And then they said existing mobile homes. Have three years to comply with their law. Um, so I, I think I need to read more of their laws to really have a better context for. Exactly what they're gonna comply with. It might mean that if uh, they don't. Meet the new requirements, they have three years to. Um, upgrade, but that doesn't seem like very long. To give someone to upgrade depending on the size of a mobile home park, if that's the intent.
Right. That's, it sounds like that's the intent to me, but that would be worth checking. Um.
Yeah, I would, I would just talk to the planner in Lansing.
Okay.
No, one of, one of the other things, um, just that's in our current law, that I. Did not see reference to in the other things that I read was that our current law requires a performance guarantee.
Right.
For the purpose of restoring the site to its original form. And, and again, I mean, if we're trying to make the analogy with. Housing developments, do we require that for multi, other multi-family developments?
So, right, so excellent point. Um, and I happened to read it this afternoon, otherwise I would not be able to recall this detail to mind. The performance guarantee is in the event the developer doesn't finish the development.
Right.
It's, it's not, because we did have language for other things about, you know, if someone builds a store. Having a performance guarantee so you could eventually restore the site twenty years later. If the store goes bankrupt, then no one buys it. That was a different thing that's in the, we talked about zoning, but for this, it was specifically during the development phase. And I think, I do not know, but we might have something like that for other. Developments, not to say housing developments, but other developments.
That's, I mean, this performance guarantee is mentioned a couple of times in the current law and this one. Says um, shall be filed each year for the purpose of restoring this.
Okay, that's a different thing I saw.
Original condition.
Okay.
Should the park cease to operate or the permit not be renewed.
Right.
So that's different from, you know, walking away from it while you're building.
Right, so there must be two different places. I, I didn't see the second one. Good, good catch. So, yes, and I think that, I mean, I think there's reasons to have performance guarantees like that. But not a gear, a reason to single out one kind of development.
Right.
So we need to be consistent.
Yeah.
And I, I tried to get some language like that, but it turns out our existing site plan law says. If the review board feels it necessary, they can require an escrow fund for the eventual site remediation. So that is in our existing site plan law, has been there for years.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if it's ever been enacted and I hope they remember they have that ability. Okay. But I, I agree, there, there's no reason to single out.
Okay.
But there may be a reason to have it.
Yeah.
And just moving forward, um, I've got a few comments based on mostly reading the Department of State document and a little bit of stuff, but do you guys have? Thoughts? Again, I think one of the key points is, yeah, what is special about a mobile or manufactured home park? That um, needs to be captured in something like this law. Um. That isn't already in our site plan law and our subdivision review law. Um, and we will probably need to look at those laws, those two laws carefully. Um, to make sure of what's in them compared to here, but offhand, um. What comes to your guys' mind having looked at some of these laws of what seemed to be things that were very special about them? Will?
Um, well, two things would be the, one would be the installation by. Specific professionals. And the other is, uh, there may be floodplain requirements. Um, for manufactured homes that you might not have. For modular homes. And, and I don't know, maybe Adam, you know more about these or maybe somebody else. Uh, on the call.
Well, one of the things that, that i- you know, struck me to think about was if there's any, um. You know, community facilities or common facilities that would be more likely. Absent or rare unless they're required, um, you know, in a, in a. Uh, manufactured home park verse, versus, for example, in a, in an apartment complex. And I'm thinking like. Um, you know, like laundry facilities, um, you know, maybe, you know, sewage dis- disposal facilities. You know, I'm, I don't know exactly what, but just thinking along those lines of. You know, what, what might take a, my, what might require special attention to make sure that it's covered appropriately. You know, and the, you know, like the, the distance, you know, for turning a vehicle around, you know, that kind of thing. Um. Uh, you know, skirting around the bottom, the installation that, you know, that Will mentioned.
And, you know, I mean, again, it depends on, I mean, some apartment buildings, maybe there's washer dryer in every apartment, but it's un- unusual, right? It's much more common.
Yeah.
There'd be maybe per building, one washer dryer.
Yeah.
I, I, I think probably most mobile homeowners have their own washer dryer in them, but I don't know. So that's a good. Good sort of question.
Wouldn't that be a health department concerned because it would affect water supply and septic?
Yeah. So, right, so, so in that, um, septic for sure, the way our zoning law is set up. Is to appeal to the health department, that if they, if they sign off that someone can handle the, the sewage disposal, that's fine by Caroline. So the density of a development would essentially be limited either by, if they're in the ag rural zone. It will be limited by the, the, the three acre per dwelling average. And if it's in the hamlet zone, it'd be entirely by what they can get away with septic wise. Um, so that was one thing you brought up. What was the other thing, uh, I'm spacing? What'd you just say, Will? Oh, water supply. So water supply, again, for us is in site plan review. There, there is a, a, so again, because it's a multi-family development. You know, again, if it passes muster by the review board, so that, that's not a, that's not a time to see how many health department, right? That's a kind of Caroline regulation in site plan on water supply. I guess it's kind of. I think there's a separation.
Yeah.
But again, if you're doing a development, you probably have, you may well have a community. Septic, for example, which makes them the water supply really, you know, anyway, so yes, as long as it. There, the, the health body says how the separation of water supplies. Then that's how those are handled. I think that's an important point where the different responsibilities lie. And why I say that we have a lot of things that were brought up in this law are handled by stuff we have on the books now.
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, Barb.
Uh, there, there is one, uh, one item in the Danby law, um, storage space. The owner shall provide storage space in convenient locations for each mobile home lot. Um, storage space shall be contained in enclosed and secure structure. Several storage structures may be located in a common building, and then it gives minimum dimensions of a storage space.
Wow, I don't get that, do you? Like, I, I guess I just don't have the imagination.
Well, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's assuming that manufactured homes are often. On the small side in terms of square footage, and so they're gonna provide some kind, you know, storage. Ability to each resident.
Yeah.
So the Grotton one kind of does the opposite. It says there shall be no outdoor storage. And then it says individual storage sheds and other structures are subject to zoning district setback requirements. And a building permit requirement.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I have a hard time. But I think the reason to sometimes have a requirement is because, again, to, to make sure that the. Person moving into the mobile home park isn't somehow being screwed by the owner, right? It's a protective thing. And I have a certain affinity for that, but I also have the, the independence that says, well, you know, if someone's willing to live in a. Structure without a whole lot of storage and they have figured it out for themselves, why should we require? The owner to install storage, so I, you know, it's something I would tend to steer away from. As being overly parental. One thing, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I have a question, but it, uh, maybe, I don't know, might drive everybody crazy, but um. Anyway, are you considering, when you're talking about mobile homes, I was just reading about it a little more, are you considering that? I- in some cases, uh, you know, like a company or whatever can own the land, right? And then the people might own their own home that's on that land.
Right, yes. Well, so, so, so there's two possible models, and I, I have my note here to, because Adam brought this up earlier, and I'm wanting to circle back to it, so now we're circling back to it. So, this, these happen one of two ways. They can be a subdivision, which means someone comes in, a developer comes in, maybe buys a parcel. Breaks it up into smaller lots, is gonna sell each of those lots to someone who's gonna put their manufactured home on it. Um, and so that's an actual subdivision, and it would have to go through our subdivision law. But something like.
And would these people pay that person rent for that land?
So in an actual subdivision, no, because the person moving in buys the parcel typically. I mean, then you maybe you can. Okay, but that, that is opposed to sort of the Boyceville model or other multifamily developments. Boyceville isn't a subdivision because it's all one parcel of land.
Right.
One company owns all the land and is renting out space on it now, so there's buildings, but you could think of that. You know, as one parcel of land that is developed into multifamily housing where I put pads out for everybody. But I still own all that ground, and you're gonna pay me rent for sticking your place there, and that's the other, both models are in existence. And I, the law would cover both.
Because that's the thing I've heard that big companies are buying these.
Yeah.
Land, and then they price the people that have lived there out of.
Yeah.
Most people, and I heard of a case in New Hampshire where the owner of the land decided to sell it. For a shopping mall, and everybody that had their mobile homes on that land had to figure out how to move them, and they're not really.
Yeah, if, right, so, yeah, if you're renting space, that is, you know, I don't want to tell, that, you know, the same would be true. You know, I've known people, you know, if you, if you owned, you know, a small home on a parcel, but you were renting that home and the owner could decide, I want. Either moving back in myself, you gotta leave, or no, we're gonna convert this to a store, you gotta leave, I mean, that. Can happen if you don't own, so I, I, I get it. Will has something to say?
Yeah, isn't that, well, isn't that similar to what we have going in Tompkins with land owned by Cornell? Aren't there a lot of uh parcels where the land is owned by Cornell and the building? Is owned by private individuals?
I don't know.
There, there are some, yes. Yes, there are.
But it is, so part of the reason for drawing the distinction is. They go through two paths, as I mean, all paths lead to the review board, but if it's a subdivision, it goes through the subdivision review law. If it's a multifamily development on one parcel, it goes through the site plan law. So I would just wanna make sure that both laws adequately cover this case. Um, you know.
All right, yeah, it sounds like you're thinking of all the, um, anyway, I'm just curious, just.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good, good question.
I mean, it may not be part of my, it may not be, uh, maybe I'm not supposed to ask those questions.
No, no, you are, you are totally supposed to, uh, you know, again, I, I welcome. Full participation of the, 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 the only time I, I put a clamp on was when Mark was here, we're talking, we're talking about changes he made to a law. And I made him sit with his hands on his, you know, under his legs, but no, you should definitely participate as much as you want to, Michelle.
So why, it seems like all different aspects are covered by existing laws. Why would we need to create, or is that what we're thinking about if we need an actual, okay.
And hence, the question is asked is what were the special things we might need to actually write, because I, and I, again. I'm only going on memory of what's in site plan and subdivision review, and there's a lot of details in here, but we should cross check. And that's the next task before next meeting is to look at, cause I, I have lots of, Mark's saying, isn't this in site plan? Isn't this, you know, so I always wanna make sure of that, but there may be some remaining items. Like, again, the subdivision review law, which might specify how big roads should be, isn't necessarily thinking that you have to get in. You know, half of a, you know, fifteen by thirty foot double wide, whereas a mobile home park probably wants to make sure that that is. Feasible to be done, right? So there may be some special things. Of which skirting has come up as, as one of them, so. Um, I looked into it a little bit because I was like, hmm, skirting, I think it's a good idea, but is it, i- is there a reason for us to require it? So it turns out New York State law gives municipalities the ability to require it. So they don't have to require it, it's totally left up to the local municipality, and so we are authorized to require it if we want to. And while.
Grotton says you have sixty, Grotton says you have sixty days after. It's put in that you have to have skirting on.
Yeah, and I think our existing law asks for skirting too, so it's, it's, it's a fairly common thing. Um, I initially felt, oh gee, they just want it to look nice. But there, there's more to it than that, but again, we can ask, but I think we probably would want to require it, and that would be something would be special. To a, a, a mobile home park law, but I actually, it probably ought to also be something special in the zoning law about a manu- uh, uh. A, a manufactured home in general. They are not required in, in general, but they're a really good idea. Um, and people talk about keeping animals out, but I can guarantee you, skirting won't do that, so forget that answer. But the real things that it does is help with energy efficiency of the structure. So that's one less, you know, surface over which you're losing energy. And so from an energy efficiency standpoint that Caroline stands behind, that would be one rationale for the, um. But the just as important one is it helps prevent the pipes from freezing. Um, in a cold climate, if we were in Florida, it might be a different question. So I think anyone probably would skirt their, their mobile home, because it saves them money and it'll print their things from freezing. So do we require it or not? Eh, you know, uh, I think it's probably a good idea, but I still. Think we can think hard about whether it needs to be requirement versus letting people be smart, um, or not. Um, but anyway, those seem to be the main reasons to to skirt it. It does give it a more finished appearance. So there's some aesthetic benefit for resale value, um, and then those protective features. Um, and there's um requirements in the New York State code that if you skirt it, how much ventilation do you have to have? Cause if you seal it up, then you get mold and mildew, so again, it's, it's a, a well-known issue, it's well-specified in. The International Residential Code, how you. Make your bottom layer, how you put your vapor barrier down, and how you put your skirting on is all in existing codes. So it means we may not need to do much in our law, other than say, there should be skirting, and it should come, it should conform to. IRC two thousand eighteen, whatever.
Would that be in just building code?
That's a good question.
Uh, so what do you mean by that being, we could refer to building code, but the requirement to have it or not is, as far as I can see, not gonna be in the building code. I don't, well, maybe it's in our local building code, if, if we have one.
I just mean, like, if, if you were to build, let's say, a modular on a crawl space, you would have to still. Do all the insulation requirements and everything, I feel like. I know a manufactured home is all done when it's delivered. Rela- different than a modular, because modular you have to put on a foundation of some sort, but I still feel like there's. Gotta be something there, because like you said, pipes will freeze without skirting or at least protection around them.
I mean, definitely take a look, from what I could see, given that. Appendix E of IRC two thousand eighteen, which New York has, has adopted, says, um, you know. Skirting is to be installed only where specifically required by other laws or ordinances, so I don't think it's required at the state level.
Uh, yeah, uh, what's the date on that?
Two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, they're coming out with new, it's, okay, so. They've added energy requirements to the uniform code. Um, in, and actually, the energy requirements are also in. Therefore, in the New York State code, and they're about to come out at the end of twenty twenty five with a whole brand new set. And they expect that there will be energy code. Um, up, upgrades or, uh, you know, additional requirements. So, um, the, um, board, the co- there's a state level code board. And, uh, they'll know what's coming down the line. We can contact them and ask them about. Specifically about skirting, so they end up in the uniform code anyway.
I think what I'm understanding is that the, the manufactured home group, federal gets it all passed. As a unit to install without anything else.
Yes, so, so, yeah, so, 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 they're, they're, manufactured homes are their own special little category in the building code, because again, it is built, like you said, the federal standard. Specify in the factory how they build it. And then all the local stuff has to do with basically how it's installed. Um, on a foundation, da, 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 so, um, yeah, I, you know, anyway, Will, do you wanna take on trying to contact said?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, but I think that, again, since that's, it is this year, but it may take it delayed, we may still wanna. Decide to specify.
Contact the guy who gave the talk.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, so I have a little list of things that we talked about, um, about the, the fact that they're installed by specific. Professionals, again, that I think is required by state code, so, uh, you know. The, a law is something I might refer to, and must be installed according to certain sub-state code, and that covers that. There are different floodplain requirements, I think you're right about that, I think Will brought that up, I don't remember much about them. Um, the need for community facilities is interesting. Uh, I think it's a nice one to have, I mean, it's one of those things that. Towns can kind of extract when a development is going in. I would love to see it for multifamily developments, it's certainly part of conservation. Developments, I think, but not other developments necessarily. Um, and other than that, it's the turning radius and skirting, uh, there may not be a lot else. So a sign between now and next meeting, which we're gonna talk about when that is in a second, would be, I think, to, to indeed go, go back to our law. Now that you guys have some of this background on the laws and, you know, say, oh, yeah, you know, this is already covered, this is already covered, this is already covered. I sort of marked up a little bit, but I, a lot of notes of go back and check.
Right.
Um, if you wish, we could subdivide where everyone's not doing the same work.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and say, you know, a couple of people look at site plan, a couple of people look at subdivision, or how, how do you guys wanna proceed with this?
That'll work.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's see, um. Uh, Adam and Barb, why don't you guys do, what do you want? You're looking at site plan, you wanna do?
But what are, what are the choices?
Oh, site plan and subdivision. Yeah, we gotta look at our existing two main laws and see where they overlap and have the provisions.
Well, site plan is in the zoning law now, isn't it?
Site plan's in the zoning law now. Uh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
But subdivision review law is not.
They're separate, yeah.
Right.
Uh, sure, I'll, I'll look at site plan.
Okay, so, so, um, that puts Adam, and then Will, that means you and I are gonna compare this against what's in our subdivision law. Um.
And I'm, I'm gonna start looking at, uh, the uniform code.
Okay. I know, you love delving into codes, and I, 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 I say that with a bit of humor and a lot of affection, because it is not my cup of tea.
I don't know, I hope my brain isn't damaged too much at this point. It's a lot to remember, but I think I can, you know, make usable notes.
All right, ta- take notes. Uh, oh, yeah, no one took notes today necessarily, did they? Oh, well. Okay, I'll, I'll work off of my notes, and next meeting I'll assign someone to, I use you, yeah, it's fine. Okay, so next meeting, um. So one thing that I'd like to have happen in our next meeting is to have Erica Fournay from the Ag Committee come talk to us about the. Um, agricultural plan that was brought out, so second assignment for next meeting is to read the plan, that may not apply to Will. Um, but I would read that plan, and if you so desire, the one appendix we have, but that's. It's the basic plan. The reason to have her here, I don't want her to have to give us a presentation on the plan they created. I would like her to help highlight a few items that she thinks are particularly important. And have us be able to ask her questions based on the fact that we've looked at the document and anything that we're wondering about. But, um, how it might impact our work or directions we might wanna take, not this year, but maybe next year, that sort of stuff. So please read, that plan's available on the town website under the Ag Committee, um, so please make sure you, you read it, it's. Fifteen pages or twenty pages, or I can't remember, it's not huge. Um, and so, she said, basically, there are no good nights. But, that being said, Wednesdays are particularly bad. Um, and she, so Tuesday's a little better, and of the weeks in March. Um, the one that had, I gotta find, um, March nineteenth was better for her than March. Um, no, so March eighteenth, which is the Tuesday, is better for her than the March twenty fifth date. Um, March nineteenth is a town board business meeting. Is March eighteenth okay for the rest of the planning board?
Yes.
It's my only good week.
Yeah, okay, good, so, so we'll do that, and we may switch to Tuesdays in general, it seems to work pretty well for people, but. We'll definitely plan a meeting Tuesday, March eighteenth, um, next month. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, great, um, thank you all, thanks for the good work, and see you in a month.
All right, bye.
Yep. Good night.
Bye.